Good afternoon and welcome to the work session for the Board of Education for Greeley Evan School District Six. Today is the 24th of March 2025. This meeting will now come to order. Lindsay, I didn't even recognize that you were there, I'm sorry. Will you call the real for us, please?
Absolutely. Director Azari?
Present.
Director Bentley?
Present.
Director Kepis-Fitzie?
Director Mash?
Present.
Director Matthews?
Present.
Director Norwood?
Present.
Director Sullivan? Five members present.
Thank you. First on our agenda tonight is our calendar review and community engagement. And so if you would, just take a minute and look at the calendar that's in front of you. We have a few more work sessions and business meetings taking place in April. But as we said last time, April's pretty, pretty clear for our calendar. And that's because all of our, all of our students and schools are pretty busy with testing. And then the first big thing on our calendar is our retirement celebration on May 7th. And then the frontier house breakfast on May 14th. And then we get, get into graduations. And so I'm sure that we'll need to get those to Ms. Lemon pretty shortly, which graduations we can attend, but do, do start making plans because it's, we're getting close. We're into, to our last nine weeks of school. Any questions, comments, thoughts on the calendar?
I have one to add.
Yes, sir.
President. April 22nd at 6:00 PM is the Northridge Marine Corps JRO TC Awards Program.
Okay. April 22nd?
Yes, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, alright. I'm sure we probably got an invitation to that somewhere.
Yeah, I think so. Amy.
I'll just add that for people. She may have sent.
She just missed it on the list.
Invites, yeah. Well, I did miss a school visit to Jackson Elementary. Sorry, guys, on May 8th. So we have the retirement celebration on the night of the 7th and then early that morning, 7:45, we'll go to Jackson Elementary. Anything else? Somebody else had something, I think.
Um, tentatively, I probably won't be here to the 14th meeting.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know.
I'm not sure 100%, but as of today, it's scheduled for the 14th.
Okay.
For my trip.
Anything else? Alright, we'll move on to board member comments and reports. And we'll start with you, Mr. Azari.
Thank you, President Matthews. Like many of my fellow board members, I had the opportunity to, to attend the Success Foundation Breakfast on March 11th. And I'd just like to thank everybody for the support of our schools and specifically at this event, the opportunity to raise money to provide musical instruments for our students throughout the district. I think that that's just great. Also, again, my fellow board members to attend the negotiation sessions. And I appreciate the invitation for board members to join in on those discussions. I know that this does not happen in many districts and I appreciate being in a district where board members are welcome to participate in that process. And finally, this was spring break, so not much else to report, although I did have the opportunity once again to be the emcee at the annual Kiwanis Club Stars of Tomorrow Talent Show that's hosted down at the Union Colony Civic Center. We have students from all over the county compete and then participate in that show. And I was happy to see that many of our students did very, very well. In fact, we earned the runner-up in the first place awards and one of our high school students won the highest award that evening. So that just shows that our district is still out there, strong competitors in the arts. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Azari. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, about the same for me. Negotiations went well. It was probably, probably the strangest one that we've had, just with uncertainties in the, in the government with the funding and stuff. So that was just kinda, right, we'll wait and see. So that was, that was just different, but I think it went well and I was glad to be a part of that also. And then on that Friday, I also got to go to the Community Council on Education. It's just the Chamber of Commerce puts that on between Ames and UNC and D6. And it's just kind of the community focusing on relationships between the three and the, and the community to better educate and see what they can do to help us. So I always enjoy going to that. It was kind of fun to hear the three different entities and how they're kind of working together.
Thank you. Mr. Norwood?
Well, I've been on the IR, so I haven't had a chance to get out much. So I did get a chance to catch up with some of the Northridge Hall of Fame inductees. Got a chance to sit down and visit with them when they got inducted to the first class of the Northridge Hall of Fame. And that's really about it. So kind of been laying home, heating up, so.
Nice, President Mash.
Yes, very much enjoyed the Success Foundation Breakfast. Again, it was wonderful to have performing, performances from each of our high schools, I believe. And, and I think it really helps folks when there's a focus. It helps them to wrap their mind around where exactly their dollars are going. So excited for our students not to have to share their clarinets with each other anymore. And then, yeah, negotiations, I guess it did have a little bit of a different vibe, just having new folks in the room, which I really appreciated, new ideas, new energy. And yeah, usually we're not worried about our federal funding or even our state funding to this degree, but we know we have the best minds in the room to, to figure that out, so.
Yeah, not much to add. Always the Success Foundation Breakfast is a wonderful event. I do like how they, they take a different focus every year. And last year it was on elementary sports and this year on, on instruments and getting instruments into the hands of our students. And I can just say, our students know the difference in, we have great, some great musicians in our, in our district and they know the difference in, in good instruments and, and not so good instruments. And so we're very thankful that, that the Success Foundation has chosen this to, to prioritize and to put in front of students. And so our students know that when they, when they want to sign up for orchestra or band, that they, they're going to have good instruments to play on and that they're, they're not going to be limited by their instruments. So, so thankful for the Success Foundation also. Negotiations always smooth and encouraging events always. I appreciate the people that, that take time away. Appreciate you guys for taking off of work to be there. Appreciate our teachers who write subplans and take so much time out of their week to negotiate with us and to meet with us and doing that on behalf of everybody else. So we certainly appreciate everyone who was there and it was a very smooth and rewarding week. So next on our agenda is our Portrait of a Graduate. So I'd like to invite Mr. Osmus to come and share. We've gotten a report already, but this, I think will be our second report on a portrait of a graduate, but love to see where you are at this point, what's been accomplished in the last month or so.
Alright, thank you, President Matthews, members of the board, Dr. Bilch. You're right, this is an update on where we are. This is a big project that we are undertaking as a system to identify Portrait of a Graduate. So just more than just academic, but what are all those different attributes that fall on a V there? And so I am going to go through just very quickly the work that we've done to this point. And so if I'm going too fast, just feel free to stop and ask a question, but, but I've already presented this to you once, and so I just wanted to, you to know kind of where we are. And then at the end, I'm going to give you an update on how we've synthesized this work down into actual language and that'll give you a chance to look at it today and give us some feedback as we go forward. So this is our work with Portrait of a Graduate, grounded in our mission and our vision of our district as well as our values. This work is in our strategy plan and one of our four focus areas mainly, our student learning and achievement. So objective for this is line our system to meet grade level requirements and meet our graduation competencies to personalize learning and getting to know our students. And specifically, our outcomes will know are successful when we see scores for our state math and English language arts assessment improve annually as well as increase on-time graduation. And also have our personalized learning plans include career, career or college pathway work or academic course work to meet our individual goals. In this project, just a reminder, we are partnering with the Colorado Educational Initiative, the CEI. You've probably seen the CEI quite a bit. We do have a nice relationship or partnership with them to help us with this work. They are doing this around the district. If you want to talk to CEI and ask them, 50 districts have worked with personally. And so we are, we are one of those. And what is Portrait of a Graduate? It is a tool that we as a school district can use to communicate those cognitive, personal and interpersonal skills that students who have when they, when they graduate. We try to do this with our community. So this is not just something we're doing, but we have reached out to our students, to our community members, to our teachers, to our parents, and trying to build this together as, as a whole community. And once created, this will be our guide. This will be our guide for teaching and learning through all of our, all of our schools and it'll provide that shared language that we need. Additionally, this will help us create a unified vision in our system on what we want our students to be able to learn. Yes, yes, achievement and academics, but also those other skills that they, that they possess. And then such as critical thinking, collaboration, resilience, and then knowing that those are things that we need to be college and career ready. And then most importantly, I think is it's just an opportunity to get our community together, to start talking about our students, what we want for our students. We, I showed a few examples of what a Portrait of a Graduate will be upon completion. We don't have the picture part done yet, but that part is coming and so I'll be able to share the graphics with you the next time we're together. We have worked on what's on the backside of this. And so what's on the backside of these is language. And so when you think about all of the surveys that we have done, we've collected those, we put them into themes, we took the themes and the words and what people have want and we created what goes on the backside of this and that's what I'll show you today. But these are just examples of what other districts have done. And then this one down here with Littleton, you can see that they put their language in more detail on the front side. I think we're probably going to end up with maybe more of a front back unless you tell me to go a different way on this one. Just a reminder, what we've done here for Creighton's process, we, we have already gathered the information. We sent the surveys out to parents, to our community, to our students, to our teachers. And we've gathered all of the data and we've actually themed the data and we've analyzed the data. Just a reminder, the questions that were in it were something along these lines, they were tailored specifically for either students or community or our teachers, but it's essentially it's one of our hopes and dreams, what skills do you want our children, our students to have in our district? If you could go back in time, like back when you were in school, like what, what would you have liked to learn in school or what would, what would be different about your education if you could predict that today? And then what are the most important skills that we need to live in today's world? It's so much different than when I was in school, when we were all in school. Themes, so once we, and then we collected all of the data, put that into a program, we came up with some themes. And so some of the themes that came out were achievement, so achievement score to high, student well-being, personal growth and independence, values and character, overcoming challenges, belonging and inclusion, support and advocacy, and then language and communication. And all of the different comments that fit underneath there as well were themed and kind of brought together. So then, this is new information. And so what we've done is we had a workshop not too long ago where we invited community members, teachers, students, we had members of our GBA that were there and we, we sat and we took all of this information. So we said, okay, we've, we've got all of this, these attributes, let's try to narrow down, we need to narrow, we can't have 12. And so we need to narrow this down just a little bit. And when you think about all the different things that our community is saying, we've got to try to condense this into just some bullets that live inside here, but we also don't want to just eliminate something. We want to make sure that our community feels heard and they've got to find their responses inside of this. And so we were there about two hours and in those two hours, we helped create what a visual might look like, but we also looked at all the themed responses. And you can see here, this, the, some of the students and the teachers and the principals and the community members working together. And then we presented. We presented what we think, what represents District Six. And so we had six different tables and six different ideas, obviously, so we'll work on creating the graphic based on all of that. But we were really close on what the language might be. And that's what I'm going to also have you look at today in the language. And just know that we today after-
Anthony, before you share the language, let's see if they have any questions about where we are so far in the process.
Sounds great. And then do we do next steps? I'll save that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, let me finish this one here. So, so next steps, because this is not done. This is, this will be multi-year. And so this is just year one. So what we'll do for this year is we'll take these themes, get some feedback from you, the feedback from our DAC. We've already got feedback from our chamber when, when Missy went out. And then we'll also get some graphics done and then we will continue to bring you along and, and then gather more information. And then this, then, once we finish up this year, is we, we want to make sure that we go into next year and start looking at how we can roll this into some of the work that we're doing district-wide, but we, we're just scratching the surface next year. So what does that look like inside of our classrooms? How does this fit in with our lessons, with some of our, our small group work and our larger group work? And then, and then probably that third pillar of making this, how we do our business inside our classrooms. So happy to take any, any questions that you would have and then I want you to see kind of where we are here and get some feedback for you.
Yeah, I've got a question, real quick. So we've, we, we obviously are acknowledging that other school districts have already moved forward with this. Do we know how they have measured the success of all this within their schools and classrooms?
Yeah, there's actually, part of our work next year will be to create rubrics that will gather some baseline feedback and, and the growth of our students in these rubrics. And so we'll need to continue that into next year. And that's why I said we, not sure you'll see a lot of this next year other than the graphic, but, so that will get our community on board with this and we'll continue to spread that, that good word. But within our classrooms, we'll need to pull more people next year to create, create the rubrics, those connections in the classrooms and then look for those, those ways to track growth of our students over time.
I think Mr. Azari is asking though, of those districts that have already done this, do they have outcomes that they can now report? Do they? Is that what you're asking?
Actually, that was exactly what I was just thinking as he was presenting the material. What, since they're ahead of us in this process, I guess the biggest question is, has it made a difference? Have they noticed that their work that they've put into this has resulted in positive?
According to our CEI person that's helping us with this, she has led this work and some districts are down the road five years and they have some, they have some positive data and actually have some of that data and would have to share that with you sometime in any week if you'd like.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I will share that.
Thank you.
I have a question. You said on there that you've sent surveys out to parents and some, what kind of response are you getting back from parents? Percentage is rough? I mean, I realize we're a district-
Like any other survey. So it's, I'm not sure of the exact number, but we had, we had mostly student responses and then we had teacher responses, then short behind, right behind the teacher responses were parent responses. But still, still a good number.
Good.
So here's what I would like for you to do here is just take one and pass it on. So here's what I would like for you to do here, is just take one and pass it on, sir. So this is the result of our workshop. So remember, this is about 30 or 40 people in a room and trying to condense and synthesize all the responses and try to work these into themes or attributes. And cleverly, the groups that night came up with six, and they said, what if we call this the District Six? So, so when we think about the District Six, six of the major themes that came out that night. And then what will our graduates be able to do at the, when they graduate with us? And you'll see that on the slide. And so I'm just going to read just the themes. But the lifelong learners, engaged problem solvers, confident communicators, contributing citizens, courageous change makers, and well-rounded individuals. And then what we did on the right side is we tried to condense all of the different language that we've collected into just bullets to make sure that we captured all of this. And so if you just want to take a little bit of time and go through each of those.
Anthony, and this, is this done, or are we still taking feedback on this?
This is our feedback.
We're still gathering feedbacks, so the board has an option to give feedback on this tonight.
And then I've got, I'll get feedback from deck next week as well, and other groups.
How does some of this tie in to what's already being offered in the district? For instance, in the IB programs at West, I know they do a lot of this, and also in Avid throughout the district.
We, you'll see this a lot throughout the district, but this will do is it will just give us some common language. And so we'll have IB, and we'll have AP, and we'll have Avid. But this will help us with just in that con, that consistent and common language through all of our programs.
But that won't change what's being offered in those other programs? It's just, is it overarching?
Bringing it together, yeah.
Anthony, where does this, where will this primarily reside? And forgive me if you've already answered this, but I think when we were talking about financial literacy, I'd say, well, we already have that, and it resides here, and it resides here, and it resides here at high school and in history, U.S. history, right? So where, when we're getting this to kids, like where does it primarily reside? Which teacher says, I'm responsible for making confident communicators? Or is that, is that every teacher? And then how do you do that?
Yeah, I think it resides in a lot of different places. And so when you're up in front of your class and you're giving a speech, like that's that confident communicator. But I think it lives in our, some of our social emotional lessons that we would have. And so our counselors in our small groups and in our middle schools and high schools during, during their homerooms and their grids hours. And I think it resides in the classroom. And so this is not just one place where it's just, it is just going to be taught in one area, but we would like this to be infused with everything that we do.
Mr. Osmus, will there be specialized curriculum? Or is this just going to be built right into what's already there?
Yeah, a lot of it lives in, yeah, sorry, a lot of it lives in our curriculum already. It's just, we will need next year, as we create rubrics and then alignment, we'll just need that time to pull it all together. And so you'll be able to see that work grow as well over the course of next year.
For like communicators, confident communicators? I have a lot of friends that run businesses in the business world, and they say that's the number one issue. They'd rather have the C student that can communicate, rather than the straight A student that can't, so.
And then when they take the time to create a rubric that has all of the criteria of what a competent communicator looks like, so stand up straight, people, use your, use your strong voice.
I do think that out of this will come additional programming and additional standards, possibly. Or why do this, other than to say to our community, this is what a graduate looks like? Which is a big part of what this is, is what a graduate looks like. But I do think there will be, I think we're naive to think there won't be any impact on programming or curriculum standards if we really mean that every graduate is going to match these 18 bullets.
It'll force us to look at what we have and what we need.
Well, each one of these areas are focused, there's a focus on each one of these areas throughout our system. For instance, when students take a speech class, for instance. Or if, in all our math curriculum throughout the district, we tackle several of these in our English Language Arts. So I'm just wondering what makes it different? You know, is it just another added thing? Or, or does it really stand for something that is unique and special that we haven't done before? That's just my overall question.
Yeah, I like what you're saying with all of these, because we do have these live in different, live in different areas. What we don't do is we don't assess it. And so what, what we will try to do is then create the rubric that gives more detail in each one of these. And so we can actually then have conversations with parents and with students around where you are and where you, where you still need to grow. And I'll share that data with you too on the E-week, on what will share with me from CEI with other districts and what they've done, and even examples of rubrics that they have, that they've done with other districts. It might help you see that, kind of where we're going.
I think my, my feedback is that, just speaking as a parent, I think my children have experienced encouragement in teaching in all of these bullet points. I think maybe this will help us to expand it. Like certainly, there are students who gravitate towards these things. They're maybe more motivated, or they find their niche in school better, and therefore they're going to be stronger at these things. Whereas the student who doesn't gravitate towards a leadership position or maybe an extracurricular activity, it will help us to really ensure that every student fits this portrait and not just those that kind of maybe take a lot of those steps for themselves.
So just be a question of how do you see it playing out in the district? That's the big uncertain question, if you will.
It is. And when I think about, about this door, and I think that it's, it's multiple years of work. And I mean, it even could have an impact on bringing folks together to look at graduation requirements. So I'm not saying we're doing this, but some districts, as a result of something like this, have implemented a community service requirement for their students. So that's just an, you know, an example of, you know, it could have a greater impact than these 18 bullets here to ensure that every student is, is truly a portrait of a graduate. What we said, I think the brochure that you see other districts have adopted, they're attractive and they're interesting to look at. And I think at the end of the day, for decades, we've said, so we know that a graduate means you've met these graduation requirements, but what else does that graduate have that we promised our community besides those graduation requirements? The ability to communicate, the ability to meet, you know, work with the public, be able to speak publicly. And I think that's at the heart of this. And to be fair, the idea is we're developing who we believe a student should, should be, what they should look like and be able to do in terms of their skill set when they leave District Six. And then there is still work to come around how we do that and how we measure that. I would, not I would, I, I believe that our strategic plan has been the guiding force for that, you know, for many years, of what, what a student looks like. We look at the vision, the mission, the vision of the district. That's been our, the guiding post for what, you know, we should be putting into what a graduate looks like, what a graduate is able to do. And now, we're looking to go a little deeper on that and to codify that more in terms of feedback from our community, I think, I think.
Dr. Pilch, do some of the schools still have community service projects? Are there some still in the district that do?
Yeah, there are. Yeah, and it's still a part of capstone for many graduates.
What other questions are there from Mr. Osmus? I'll just say, similar to what Rob said, Kyle and I were at the Community Council of Education, and this was presented, and they, we heard very much similar comments to what Rob was saying, that we will take the C student who can communicate, who can look people in the eye, and who can, is not just attached to their phone all the time, rather than the A student. So I'm excited that we're doing this work, and so thank you.
And I'll take any feedback that you have. It doesn't have to be today, but just take this with you. And you can give that to Dr. Pilch or-
Is the QR code for feedback still open, or have we stopped that phase?
That was more for the questioning to gather all of the information so that we could theme and then come up with descriptions.
Thanks, sir. Next on our agenda is our legislative update. Let's invite Mr. Fall to come and bring us this update. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, President Matthews, and Board Directors, Dr. Pilch. My name is Nate Fall. I'm in House Legal Counsel for the school district. And we are doing a legislative update. I just want to share that since the last meeting, at least according to our bill tracker, which I do trust, Ann Barkis, is including everything that's relevant for our purposes, there really only were two new bills added to the bill tracker. One of which had to do with AEDs, and another one that had to do with dyslexia requirements. I didn't include them on this document, but if you do have questions about that, I can provide you more information later. So we can start with board priorities. The first, just so you know, that financial literacy bill has still just been referred amended to appropriations, and we just haven't seen any further progress. There were a number of amendments that were passed during the House Education Committee, and it's just kind of in limbo at this point. So we're continuing to monitor it. At this point, it's my assumption that we can integrate financial literacy with another subject, at least my reading of the law. And so whether or not we actually have to implement or add a full class, I think is to be determined. But we know we at least have a full year, if that's the case. We'd have a full year to prepare for that.
So are they saying that you have to teach these standards? Because they've already said the standards won't change.
Right. So the standards, it's, it's the same standards. So there's already a statute that includes the financial literacy standards. And right now, it's recommended that we have curriculum that includes these financial literacy standards. Now it's no longer a recommendation, it's a requirement. And so whether or not we can integrate that into one of our current subjects-
We're already doing that.
Yeah. So I think we may be okay, and I think we just need a little bit more direction from the State Board of Education, because ultimately, they'll be charged with developing curriculum for meeting this financial literacy requirement.
So it's not actually, now it's not proposed as a financial literacy course?
No, just a requirement. It's just a grad requirement that you have to take, you have to get at least- and I can just read the language so I don't mess this up. So it says that satisfactory completion of a course on financial literacy, as defined by 2232-135, that's the financial literacy statute I was describing, which incorporates the standards on financial literacy developed by the State Board of Education, is a condition of high school graduation in the public schools of this state.
So it's a little ambiguous, isn't it, whether it's going to, that first sentence sounded like it might be a course requirement, but then the rest is not.
Can it be a mini-course inside of a course? Is that satisfying?
I think, so if the, if the state, if the state board develops standards, I think it's possible that it could be incorporated in a current course, like Economics, I think, was the one that you were talking about earlier. And then, and that students can earn that credit in ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th grade. So they don't have to just earn it in 11th or 12th, which is another amendment that came forward.
I get confused personally, because I was under the impression that we already have standards surrounding financial literacy embedded in other curriculums in, within the state standards. So when we talk about writing standards for this, I think that's just going to be duplicating what already exists out there. I don't know, but it-
It could very well be the State Board of Education just checking a box and saying, you know, if you need these things, then you're good to go. That this, this would count towards your financial literacy requirement. So I think we just need to wait to see what the State Board has to say about that. But it still could open the possibility that we do have to develop a standalone course for financial literacy, if it can't be embedded in something else.
Is the FAFSA still a part of it?
The FAFSA is still a part of it. It has been substantially amended, essentially that students can decline to fill out the FAFSA if they affirmatively decline to complete it, or authorized school personnel determines it is not feasible for the student to complete an application. So, which is pretty flexible. Students can just decline, or a school official like the principal can say it's not feasible for the student to complete the application. But it's still expectation that all students would complete it. So now you just have to affirmatively decline it as a student. Any other questions on that? The cell phone bans, that did pass the House, so it's been moved to the Senate Education Committee on 3/26. I should say, communication devices in schools, not cell phone bans. And just know that we are already in compliance if that law were to pass, or that bill were to pass. I do want to spend some time, though, on federal law. It's possible that you have read the news. It's possible that you have seen that the President issued this executive order, that's at Bullet Point 2, Improving Education Outcomes by Empowering Parents, States, and Communities. President Trump released that last week on March 20th. And President Trump directed the Secretary of Education, which is Secretary Linda McMahon, to take necessary steps to facilitate the closure of the Department of Education. We know that later that day, Secretary McMahon released a statement on that executive order, essentially stating that education is fundamentally a state responsibility and that, you know, they're going to begin the process to close the Department of Education. They made some promises, or when I say they, Secretary McMahon made some promises that they will continue to fund schools, that they will continue to fund students for special education services pursuant to the Individuals and Disabilities Education Act, that they will continue to support college student borrowers and others, quote, "who rely on essential programs," end quote.
Is that through the end of the fiscal year, September 2025?
So yes, it sounds like that will be happening within this next, within this year. And so, and then if you go back to the first page, that Dear Colleague Letter on February 14th, I had kind of briefly mentioned that at the last board meeting. They also issued an FAQ on this Dear Colleague Letter. All this is linked into, and I'll make sure that you all get an electronic version if you do want to read these. But this is just another area that this administration is really eyeing, is discrimination on the basis of race preferences and stereotypes, which came through these U.S. Supreme Court decisions around racial preferences for admissions into universities. And the U.S. Department of Education has essentially taken those decisions and applied them down to K-12, that we can't be treating others differently on the basis of their race. We need to be looking at them as individuals. And that race cannot necessarily mean something about you, right? And so that is, they have mentioned that they're going to issue additional guidance on this. But really, what it seems to look like is reverse discrimination, or kind of the types of programs that they're going to be reviewing, the U.S. Department of Education is. So again, still a little unclear, unclear about how funding will continue to move forward and what the world looks like without a Department of Education. I will say that it is one of our newest agencies in the federal government. It is important, but without it, we'll just have to kind of figure out how the states are to address education. I mean, this really brings us back to local control, which we often argue about wanting more of. So I just, I don't know if you have any specific- So I just, I don't know if you have any specific questions about this, but what I can do is I can start to put together kind of a memo of all of the executive orders and kind of their alleged impact kind of moving forward and I can share that with this board and it can kind of be a living document ongoing. But other than that, I just don't know if you have any specific questions or concerns about kind of the state of the union.
What? I just have an operational question that I'm sure other folks in the community would wonder about and ask who may not know. How is funding accessed for our schools? Is that through the state or do we go directly to the federal government? And will these changes in your kind of vision, Superintendent and the folks in charge of the budget, will these changes truly cause some hardship potentially down the road or do we, or does the federal government really play that big of a concern for us as an individual school district?
I'll have Ms. Sponsor join us at the microphone so everybody can hear it.
It's pretty confusing.
It's very confusing. It's very complex.
It is complex and I will say it depends.
Yes.
So we have many grants from different agencies and so each agency handles their grants differently. Our big grants like Title I, all the titles, and then IDEA currently go through the state. So the federal government allocates money to the state. The state then calculates through their magic calculation how much each district gets and then we have to work through the state. The state then works through the feds and back and forth to get the money. There are other grant programs though that we do work directly with the federal agency. Some of the security grants, for example, we work with those agencies directly. So it kind of depends. I am preparing for disruption in the process. I think we need to just go into this next fiscal year knowing that reimbursements for federal grants might be slow. I think that we will still get reimbursed at some point, but I think the process is just going to take time. So I think we, as a district, just need to be prepared that we might have to float some of these grants for a while. We currently do that because grants are reimbursement basis anyway, but we might have to float some longer than we currently do.
Megan, what about USDA, school food?
So that also goes through the state. I'm looking at Danielle. She's going, I don't know. I think that's the question. I don't know that anybody really knows. There are some programs through the USDA that we know have already been canceled. So we know that there will be some things that we won't be able to do. I think school meals, which is obviously the biggest grant that we get through the whole district really, I think that will continue in some form or fashion. I don't know that we know what that looks like going forward, but I think to make a change to a program like that will be challenging, but it is possible.
Megan, what about Title I?
So Title I, because Title I is written into law, I believe that they will have to continue to fund that. What has happened in the past is the rules around how we spend that money is, have been changed. So it'll be interesting if these are kind of given to the state as a block grant. Will the state get to have more control over how the funds are spent or will there be certain assurances that the state has to sign to get the federal money? So I think, and my grant team and I were just having that conversation this afternoon, it's possible that we might have more flexibility in how we use our Title I money. It's also possible that we might have to sign that we promised to do X, Y, and Z and we might actually have more constraints on how we spend the money. It's, I think it's too early to tell, but I think we are anticipating there will be a change in how that process works.
And then the other big one that I remember is IDEA.
Yes. That one I think will probably have the least amount of change, at least I'm hoping. I think that even if the program is moved from the Department of Education to Health and Human Services, don't really see the program itself changing significantly. I think the hoops that we have to jump through to get reimbursed for the money might change, will change, but in terms of that program getting cut or changing significantly, I don't see that for that program. That's just my own hypothesis from what I have seen in the past. I think that program would be really hard to change.
That one's also a law, right?
Yes.
But it has never been fully funded.
Correct.
So in general, in some cases, the district may have to assume some added responsibility prior to seeing the money coming back to us. That's what we have to prepare for.
Yes. I believe we should be preparing for that.
Okay.
Can you respond about Medicaid at all and Medicaid reimbursement? Megan, I know there's a lot of worry about Medicaid statewide because of the state Medicaid budget.
Right.
And that we're overspent in Medicaid and will be overspent significantly next year statewide.
Right.
So, and we do receive Medicaid reimbursement for services directly to students.
Right. I don't know that we have a lot of detail yet. I think there is some concern that certain services may be no longer funded. I know Tom and I have had some conversation about private duty nurses, for example. Currently those are covered through Medicaid, but those may not be in the future. And so if a student needs that level of support, does that mean that we as a district need to provide that support? So there may be additional costs that we would have to incur just depending on what services are still covered and what services the child really needs. So I think in terms of funding, we're planning right now on level funding for next year in terms of how much Medicaid money we would have. We right now use our Medicaid money primarily to pay for a lot of our nurses' salaries. So if that funding goes away, then that would be a huge challenge to overcome.
The other kind of significant bucket is our after-school program called 21st Century. So we have, we have 21st Century programs at many of our schools. How many do we know?
Eleven.
Eleven of our schools. And those are federal dollars that flow through the state of Colorado. So that's, you know, another, a big bucket of money we're watching and looking to, to see what the decision will be made there.
I have not heard anything about 21st Century. So I hope that that one is safe, but I don't know. I, I think we'll just have to watch over the next few months and see, see how this unfolds and see what kind of guidance we can get.
And to add on to that, the JBC did finally release a revenue forecast and they're looking at potentially a $1.16 billion gap. So we're facing budget constraints from the state too.
I've heard that School Finance Act may be introduced by the end of the month, fingers crossed.
End of this month?
The end of March, yeah.
Wow.
Such a challenge that like when we get our budget and we have to, and then the federal fiscal year and there's, I mean, I guess that's why we have to do that.
It doesn't line up perfectly.
I think it would be able to take May off.
I wish.
So right now we're filling those hard to fill in critical positions, but really holding on the hiring of other positions in the district. So let's say you're a, you know, a subject area teacher, I don't want to name one, middle school. It is not a world language or a special education position and you're retiring. You may not be, may not be filling that position at this time. So every position is being looked at before we post it to fill it just because we just don't know. We just don't know enough. Schools are very anxious to hire and very anxious to have their staffing to be able to hire. Do you want to add anything to that, Ms. Sponsor?
Well, so just for my own internal budgeting work, I have kind of used a proposal that has come from the Speaker, Julie McCloskey, and her proposal is basically to go ahead and implement the new funding formula, but at a reduced rate. So really, according to the current law, the new formula would be introduced at 18%. So they would calculate what you get under the new formula and then take 18% of that. Instead of the 18%, they would do 10%. So it would still be an increase in funding, just not as much as we thought under the current law, the law that was passed last year. So that does help us because given our demographic, the at-risk students and those different components of the new formula gives us additional funding. So I am kind of proceeding using that proposal. I think that is likely to be introduced, I'm hoping. There has been some disagreement though that some of the triggers for pausing the implementation have been met. So I don't know where that's really going to go, but from what I'm kind of gathering, if the Speaker of the House has got a proposal that she's ready to introduce, then I think that's probably what will be moving forward.
We have in the past planned for growth as we built the budgets. We won't plan for growth for next year. We're going to budget flat, a flat number of students at this point. We, there's just so much unknown to really be certain that we will see growth with so much, so much confusion.
Right.
In the community around, just really where things are.
What other questions around school finance?
Since the time of year, I wish that I had a crystal ball that actually worked, but I do not.
You're pretty good.
Yeah.
This one's, yeah, it got added challenges.
Well, I usually forewarn Ms. Sponsor when I'm going to call her out on the spot like this, but Dr. Pilch is the one who did it, seriously. It's not my fault. Thank you.
Thank you.
The rest of these bills are just bills that we have talked about. There hasn't really been much of an update. Just know that the Accountability Bill will be reviewed by the House Education Committee on Thursday. They did have kind of a listening session last week just to get a little bit more information about what this bill does. We haven't been a big player in this bill. I quite frankly just don't think it does enough, but you know, I think it's a step in the right direction, but we just haven't been super involved in this legislation. The housing development on faith and educational land has been assigned to the Senate Local and Government Housing that did pass through the House and actually a few school districts ended up joining in support of this bill, including the Colorado Rural Alliance, which I thought was pretty interesting. And then the other proposed legislation that we have, the data reporting requirement did pass through the House. It's onto the Senate. It has been fairly substantially revised, but nonetheless, you're going to try to create a streamlined approach for all of the data collection and reporting that we are required to do. And then the last, the modifications to the Colorado Open Records Act that did pass the House second reading, or I'm sorry, the House second reading was today. I didn't check and see where the vote came on that, but by all accounts, I can assume that this bill will be passed. I did update all these hyperlinks as well, just so you can see the most recent amended version of the bills so you can kind of follow along and see the changes that have been made. I don't know if you have any other questions about the remaining bills or other bills that are out there or just questions generally for me. Any other questions, guys, on these bills?
Is there a bill regarding charter school, charter schools being able to enter districts without board approval?
Is that the BOSIs?
No, they would be, they would be, I don't know if it's BOSIs, but they'd be directly chartered through the League of Charter Schools, which they can do now anyway. So I don't know, I don't know what the difference is. Maybe the way it's currently written is you have to approach your current district initially and then if your current district isn't interested in chartering, you go to the league. I don't know.
But that's what it already exists, I thought, so.
Yes, I don't know either, but there is some, there is something, there's been some media about that. Emily, you're right, about charter schools being able to go, to be directly chartered without going through the local school district, which frankly, unless they change the funding formula that the league offers, that is not, they, they pay, they recoup more PPR from our local district than they would from the league if they went through the league. Or the institute. I'm saying that wrong, right, Megan? It's the Charter School Institute.
CSI.
I apologize. It's CSI, it's not the league. The league is the group that supports charters. CSI is a chartering school institute, Charter School Institute.
I will, I'll get some more information on that.
Okay. Let's go.
Are there other questions about legislation you all are wondering about?
Anything else, guys? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fall. We are, it's our debrief of the work session and we'll start with Mr. Norwood.
It is enlightening to see that we have such great leadership, not only in finance, but in our legal counsel that keeps us updated. It's, every time I come to a board meeting, it's, it amazes me how much that they can really help the district and help us.
Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, thanks to everybody. You know, from my seat, it's just frustrating to have you guys be in this, I don't know. And I know it's not your guys' fault, but it's just, it's hard. It'd be hard if it was me running my business, so I can't imagine how hard it's making you guys' job. So just thanks for being dedicated and keeping up to date.
Mr. Ozori.
Yeah, thanks to Mr. Osmus and all the folks that have worked on the profile of a graduate, it's not profile.
Portrait.
Portrait. Kind of similar words in a lot of ways, but portrait of a graduate and I agree with what some of the other folks around the community have said that regardless of GPA, all our students are, are looking at those six bullet points and being successful in our schools. And then finally, once again, thanks to Nate and Megan for all the work surrounding school finance. It is very frustrating, but I'm glad that you folks are in the trenches working on that for us. Very much appreciated.
Vice President Nash.
Yeah, I really like the district's six bullet points and it's, I was looking at that and I was like, oh, I, I hope that I could achieve this for myself someday. So it's really encouraging if that, if those are the values and the skills that we instill in our students, the future looks bright. So thank you for all that work. I was just looking at the bullet point that says create measurements and metrics to bring the portrait of a graduate to life and that seems like that's the next really big work. So yeah, thank you for, for working on it. It seems like a good complement or added piece to our strategic plan. And thank you for helping us to try to see into the crystal ball. But I guess, as Mr. Norwood said, is that we've all, we're just so blessed to have such knowledgeable people. It doesn't feel like, oh, how are we ever going to figure this out? I have confidence that we will, no matter what we have to do to make the balance, the budget balance.
Yeah, nothing, nothing much to add again. Thanks. We do have excellent people working on, on these things and we thank you all. And thank you for, for keeping us updated, keeping us in the loop on, on all the different things, so.
Mr. Matthews, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of updates I'd like to share.
Oh, absolutely. Go ahead.
Thank you, since we, time will.
Yeah, we've got time.
First, I would like to introduce to you all, I think a lot of you know Mr. Jeff Kurtley, but he, you approved his hire here a few weeks back and he wasn't able to be at a school board meeting. And then tonight I am actually sending Mr. Kurtley and Mr. Henson to another meeting, which I'll tell you about in just a moment. So he won't be in tonight's meeting, but Jeff. But Jeff, Jeff is our new hire as Director of.
Facilities.
Facilities, just Director of Facilities. So, he oversees a significant part of the work, and as I understand, he has hit the ground running. And he, he'll sit in in our meeting tomorrow, President Matthews and Vice President Mash, when we meet tomorrow. He'll sit in as well, and in our later meeting as well. So, welcome to Jeff. Glad to have him on board. He may be a familiar face to you all. He should be a familiar face to you all, as he was the lead on our bond issue as our outside manager. So, he's our outside manager. Welcome, Jeff. And then the meeting I'm sending Jeff Van Kent to, so they won't be in our school board meeting, is the county is hosting the last of their listening sessions around the, where the, their justice center should be rebuilt, whether that should be downtown Greeley or out on O Street. And so, the last open forum for that is tonight from 6:00 to 8:00. And so, the two gentlemen will, will go on behalf of the district to be a part of that, that forum and to hear the conversation that, that goes on there. We're still, the county's still in listening phase with the community, trying to, before they make a decision on where they might rebuild the justice center, whether that would be downtown or out on O Street, and the other county offices that are downtown as well. So, we're, we're still engaged in those conversations. We'll bring you in in the next couple of days and show more detailed information with you all and give you a chance to ask the individual questions you might have, and then we'll bring that to the full board for public view here, either at the next board meeting or the following board meeting. Depending on where we are with the city and the county in conversation, then we'll be able to bring it forward to the public. So, looking forward to sharing that information with you all. That's it.
All right. Well, thank you. Well, our work session is adjourned, and we'll see everyone back at 6:00 for our business meeting.[1320.65]